A majority of the St. Louis County Council has turned sharply against St. Louis County Executive Steve Stanger, a far cry from the status quo only a couple of years ago. St. Louis County Councilman Pat Dolan has stuck with the county executive and joins us on the latest edition of Politically Speaking to talk about the way forward in county politics. So, let's hit the music.
This is the Politically Speaking Podcast, a candid conversation with the Show Me State's biggest political newsmakers.
I'm Jason Rosenbaum.
And I'm Joe Manis.
That's Eric Greitens, Navy SEALs running for governor, and I'm really, really glad to be on with you, Jason and Joe.
I'm going to push back on these regulators.
I'm doing this for the people.
I was encouraged along the way, not just by my family, but by a lot of teachers and professors and knew when I was in college that I would run for office someday.
We're very excited about the prospect of having some more free market solutions.
Even though after the conversation, I still might not agree.
We want our listeners to get a real sense of what drives these people.
They're actually people with a story to tell.
No one was fooled, no one was tricked, there was no deceit. This was a really simple matter. And if someone needs to come in and read to the council, then that's a pretty darn sad state of affair.
That is St. Louis County Executive Steve Stanger talking about the recent conflict he's had with the St. Louis County Council. Hello, I'm Jason Rosenbaum, a reporter with St. Louis Public Radio, and this is the Politically Speaking Podcast, the only show about Missouri politics featuring a co-host with improvised taglines to make his co-host laugh. My co-host, by the way, who is laughing right now.
Sorry. Yeah, is Joe Manis.
Of the St. Louis Public Radio?
Yes. Yeah, well, I think people know that after like four years.
I think so. We don't have County Executive Steve Stanger on, we had him on three months ago, but we do have somebody who's been in the midst of this conflict in the county council.
In the trenches.
In the trenches in the county council, our special guest today.
Pat Dolan, County Council, Fifth District.
For the Fifth District, and this is the first time you're on our show. And I was telling the councilmen before we pressed record that after the show, we will have had every elected office on the show. So, that means county executive, assessor, prosecutor, and council districts 1 through 7.
Yes.
So.
So, we are thorough, folks. If you want to know what's going on in St. Louis County government, you can always go through our website and click on Politically Speaking, and you can go through and find them all.
We have them all. So, before we pepper you with really tough questions that will make you cry, tell us what your district encompasses and which municipalities are in it.
Wow. Okay, well, basically, it's a Fifth District, 1 of 7. And the broad borders would be Olive on the north, Grabway on the south, just inside of Lindbergh. So, if you went down Warson Road, Woodlawn, cross over Big Bend, turns into Sappington, down to Grabway, back to the city limits. There's a portion south of Olive, just a little bit east of McKnight that jogs off into the First District, but then it comes back in. So, majority of, south of Olive to Grabway.
So, we're talking about such communities either all or part of, like Kirkwood, Glendale, Shrewsbury, Richmond Heights, and of course, my home turf of Webster Grove.
Well, if you're on the north, you would have Olivet, New City.
Yes.
Ladoo, Clayton, Richmond Heights, Rock Hill, Brentwood, Warson Woods, Maplewood, Shrewsbury, Glendale, Oakland.
And a little bit of.
Prestwood, McKenzie, Village of McKenzie, Marlboro, I'm sure I'm going to blow this and miss somebody.
That's impressive.
That was impressive, but there's also a little bit of unincorporated St. Louis County as well.
Correct, which I just came from a meeting prior to this, in Afton.
Okay. So, talk a little bit, because you haven't been on the show before, and even though those in your district sort of know who you are, but just give our listeners a sense of why you got involved in politics and what, and a little bit of your background. Of course, the important question of where you went to high school.
Of course. Well, I can start. I went to CBC a long, long time ago, still military when I was there. But, you know, through work, I'm in the building trades. I'm a union representative with my local now, but back then I was active. And as we all know, everything's political these days on any front, so I was involved there.
What's the name of the union?
Sprinkler Fitters Local 268.
Okay, and you're the president?
I'm the president, and I'm retired, but I'm still an officer, unpaid officer.
So, you don't actually install sprinklers anymore?
No, I'm not working in the field. I'm retired.
You've paid your dues on that one.
But, but talk about what you currently do do, because I thought that was fascinating. We were talking about it before we went on the air.
Well, getting, real quickly, getting the first question is the, how I got involved with, I was on Richmond Heights. I live in Richmond Heights, been there for 35 years, my wife and I have two sons, Patrick and Christopher. And we, there was an opening on Richmond Heights City Council, I ran one. And so, I did two terms on Richmond Heights City Council, so I was familiar with municipal government. And then was off for a few years, and then Barbara Fraser was running for Senate. There was an opening on St. Louis County Council, that's when I ran for that, my day job. I retired, except from the Sprinkler Fitters, but I do a thing for Missouri State AFL-CIO. I'm one of the people, basically, with the Building Union Diversity Program, BUD program. It's a bunch of labor leaders got together and decided that we needed to do better in creating opportunities for minorities in the construction trade, so that's the short version. So, I'm one of a couple of people that daily helps run that program and meet with the individuals, take them to different training programs and try to find them jobs. Actually, we have, we're in our, I was with them this morning, our 10th group that we've gone through, Cohort 10, and almost 90, oh, close to 90% of them that have gone through, that finished our program have gotten jobs.
So, how many are in like this, the group?
Well, in this group right now, there's 10. We can take up to 15. What we do is we take them to different training departments, which I have to give an ad to all the training departments in the region, the building union, the building trades, because they allow us to come to our training departments just for a couple of days or a week, depending on which the training department, and just show these individuals what's there. You know, if it's something they'd like to do, they explain to them what the building trades do. You know, one note I bring up to people, there's, like in anything, some of the trades have issues with jurisdiction or what have you, and different people are in different groups. But in this particular program, we have people who are in or out of the AFL-CIO, people who are in or out of the building. We have the carpenters, laborers, all the other building trades. So, it's, everybody's come together, along with some agencies, United Way, Metro, Barnes, VJC, RSU. I think Boeing's coming on board to help, you know, they try to add money to this. We have grants from MODOT and MSD, so all these, everybody's come together to do this program, which is fascinating. It's fantastic. I have a lot of opportunities that people didn't know existed, so.
To shift a little bit to the council, I want to ask very generally, because we've had council members on the show, but I don't actually think I've asked this question before. What is it sort of like to be a member of the council, kind of on a week-to-week, day-to-day basis? Because unlike other counties where county commissioners are full, it's a full-time job, they get paid, you know, $50,000, $60,000, $70,000 a year. The county council, well, I don't want to say it's a part-time job, because I don't want to say that you don't do work when you're not in session, they get paid like $20,000 a year, and you're not in session all the time. Everybody, I think, has other jobs that they have to do while you're representing basically districts the size of medium-sized counties. So, I'm interested to hear your perspective on what the daily and weekly grind of this job is like.
Well, first off, it certainly doesn't pay full-time, but to say it's not full-time, it's what you want to do with it. I personally enjoy doing it, but I just mentioned, we just came from Afton with a meeting with some seniors citizens down there to have a faith-based group that meets once a month, so we, you know, do I get paid to go do that? No, but I enjoy being with them and hearing what their concerns are. So, that's me personally. I put in a lot of time, but that's by choice. We do meet once a week, and so we don't, we're not in and out of session, basically. My, we're only off four of the Tuesdays a year, so it's, and that schedule is typically predetermined at the beginning of the year. But it's what you want to put into it. There's a lot of time involved. We do have a full-time assistant.
Yes, I was going to ask.
Patrick Mulcahy's here, my assistant, who handles day-to-day emails, phone calls, communication, different, which I could get into later, I'm sure, bills, we go through them, and they pre-read everything, as well as us, but do whatever research we need. So, we do have a person, a full-time paid assistant, that handles those day-to-day affairs, so.
Now, just so our listeners have a know, how long have you been on the council?
Well, I'm in my second term, so this would be in the seventh year.
Right.
And you're not term limited, just so people know. And was there anything in particular issue or whatever that prompted you to run for office for this post to begin with?
No, I was always involved, and like I say, at the time, the current county councilwoman, Barbara Fraser, was running for Senate.
Yeah.
So, I was approached by a couple of different people, and not just labor, not one particular group, just a few, to say, you know, do you have any interest in doing something like this? And I, you know, I enjoy the public service, and it's something I, you know, thought, well, it'd be nice to try. And I didn't know exactly what was all involved. I mean, I was somewhat familiar, because I had helped on some campaigns with other people who had run for county council. But, so it's been a learning experience, and still have a lot to learn, certainly, but glad I did it.
So, let's talk about exactly what you've gotten into, essentially. So, to give our listeners a little bit of a backdrop, because I'm not sure that there are a lot of people that pay attention to the minutia political details of the council.
And that's what this show is all about.
And that's what it's about, and I just want to get this out of the way, so we're not discussing it ad nauseam. Basically, there are seven council members, and the county executive can sign or veto bills, and he can obviously have an opinion on bills, whether he likes it or not. But the council members decide what legislation ends up being passed. Oftentimes, the council, although it's split into Republican and Democratic council members, in my opinion, and you could correct me if I'm wrong, I actually think party is less important on this council than most places. I'm not saying it's never important, but it's really kind of like whether or not you agree philosophically with the county executive on a certain issue or whether you oppose them. And what happened after this past election cycle is that Mike O'Meara lost reelection to Rochelle Walton-Greim, and then Ernie Trachus won an open seat.
From South County, so this is the sixth district.
So, it basically meant that County Executive Stanger no longer had a majority of people on the council that politically supported him anymore. And it changes by the issue, and I think most bills are actually passed unanimously, so this doesn't really come to pass very often. But what I've noticed is you have stayed pretty much on the side of the county executive on some controversial issues. I'd like to kind of, okay, that's my perspective. I'd like to get your perspective on how you see the council post 2016 election cycle.
Okay. Well, first, I agree with you, which I wish that we'd run a nonpartisan, like municipal government, Webster. They, they're nonpartisan. Richmond Heights was the same way. But the charter declares you run on a party line, and I'm the Democrat in the council seat. If it was up to me, and it has been typically, because I know other council members and myself talk about this a lot of times, that 95 or better percent of the things that we do should be and typically are nonpartisan. It's just common sense, run the business.
Building, like building roads, you know, approving contracts, stuff like that.
If you need roadwork or zoning changes in your district, I'm not going to say no, because you're a Republican.
Right.
If that's what, that's my philosophy of it. It should be, I mean, for the most part, and typically it has been, just run the business, common sense. That's what people expect, I was, I think, but I, I mean, I'm not going to deny that. I personally think things have got more political than they need to be. And I've stated to others that I'm here to represent the Fifth District, although we vote on the entire county when things come up. But my job is to represent the Fifth and try to stay away from any agendas. And I don't have an agenda of my own that try to push through. I'm not carrying an agenda for any other officer or office holder. But it's, I'm not going to deny that it has got more political than I believe it should be.
Now, at the meeting Tuesday, which I covered, you basically brought up the issue of agendas as you were explaining why you were going to vote no against the council resolution calling for an independent investigation into accusation. I'm simplifying this, but it's basically accusations that the county police were shirking their duties in patrolling the MetroLink stations. I mean, that's boiling it into a nutshell, and the Post-Dispatch had several stories. But you, as I said, cast the only no vote, and you did talk about what you saw as political agendas as opposed to trying to seek the truth. You want to expand on that a little bit, or explain exactly what your thoughts were about that?
Okay. Well, first off, as I stated Tuesday night, I agree with my other council members that if, in fact, these allegations warranted or true, then there should be an investigation, no doubt. And it doesn't look good, not at all. But also being in the position we're in, we have, we're somewhat privileged to get both sides of the story, which I don't believe where this article was, that's what I was saying the other night. I think the article, not anything the council's doing, but that was politically motivated and slanting it in a way to bring out the point, the way the article intended to. But if there is another side of that story, and knowing that, I thought that it would be prudent to let the police department, a nationally accredited police department, have the opportunity to do an investigation.
First?
First.
Okay.
As I would if the Transportation Department or the Health Department, any other department in St. Louis County. If you were driving down the street and saw three or four of the Transportation Department guys standing underneath a tree just, you know, doing nothing, you'd say, well, that's outrageous, and we're paying them to be working. Not knowing that maybe they were waiting for material, and they were told, it would cost us too much to send you to another job to stand there for half an hour until your material shows up. We don't know the other side of the story, but when we do, but we weren't given that in this article, so everybody just sees one side of it. So, I believe the county police have enough integrity and knowledge to perform the investigation. And if not, and if they find out they need more assistance, they'll ask for it.
I mean, I read the articles too, and without getting too into the particulars, you can read them on St. Louis Post-Dispatch website. Is what you're getting at that you feel like it's Metro basically trying to ding the county police department, because they've been kind of at odds over the last few months? I mean, that, I've read other coverage of the fact that the leadership at Metro and the county police department have not gotten along recently. And I'm just trying to read between the lines of what you're saying, essentially. Is that what you're getting at, essentially?
Well, I think everybody's entitled to draw their own conclusions, but I'm just, I'm saying there is another side to the story that's not being put out there for people to form an opinion. For me, they're only getting one side of an issue to form an opinion, which I don't think is fair to the police. And if, in fact, there are problems, then they're going to correct them. There were things put in there that were from two years ago, and maybe something was done to take, solve that situation. I believe there was, as a matter of fact. And, you know, another picture, I was told something different than what the paper put out. You know, it was Homeland Security talking to the different groups. Some of them are already off work, and the other ones were listening to what they were going to be doing before they start their shift. They, they have a meeting, and I was, but I'm not making excuses if that's, it is a problem. Safety, obviously, is a major concern, there's no way around that. But in this particular case, I think it was slanting it, and that's, that happens, I'm not saying it doesn't.
Now, the backdrop of all this is the fact that there's been several high-profile incidents of violence, even shootings, at the, at the MetroLink stops, and that, that's one of the reasons that there's beefed up county police presence, which was interesting, all this has happened right before all this came out. So, you don't know if there's pressure because there's more police there, and maybe there, I don't know. But as a councilman, do you have any sense of this transition to having a heightened police presence is being done smoothly, or are you hearing a lot of bumps in the road?
Well, you know, I, again, I believe they're doing, they being the county police are doing what they can, and all of the city police in St. Clair. I'm sure there's always more that can be done, there's no denying that, I mean, everybody wants more done. I, without saying the municipality, I talked to a chief of one of the municipalities the other day. Majority, once it leaves the city of St. Louis, the blue line of the MetroLink's entirely in the Fifth District. And I talked to one of the chiefs the other day and said, I just want you to know, we had a situation, an assault, or it wasn't just a, you know, a minor incident, and he, on the, either on the train or on the platform. And he said the county police weren't standing there at the moment, but they got the call. And he said it was about even two minutes, they were there, took over the entire investigation. I think they ended up catching the individual who caused the assault, but he, you know, he couldn't praise them enough for what, but you don't hear that all the time. They just go about their business every day, doing their job, and they don't, every time they do an arrest or prevent something, they don't, it's not publicized, but they are there. And you could go through, everything we do, there's somebody complains about something, and that's their right. I mean, I shouldn't even say complain, they share their concerns, they have every right to do that. But you could go through a whole stack of papers and pick out something that somebody didn't like and said, and then put that in an article, and then you might have 10 more of them sitting there that somebody said they did a good job. That's all on how you present it, so.
Do you still have confidence in Chief Belmar? Because I know Ben Shamel, who's on the Bi-State Board, called for him to step down. I'm getting a sense, though, that the county executive has full confidence in him. What's kind of your take on that?
Well, 100% confidence in the chief and his staff. You know, they're in a tough position, and they're going to do what they have to do. And I have total confidence that if there is, somebody hasn't been doing or performing their job, then they'll address it, same as I would expect any department head of any other department in the county. This isn't isolated just to the police department.
Before we get to our next topic, we're going to have a brief musical interlude with more information about how to read our stories. You can find all the stories on Missouri's political scene from Joe and I on STLPublicRadio.org. And if you haven't already, subscribe to Politically Speaking by typing in Politically Speaking on iTunes. And we're back with St. Louis County Councilman Pat Dolan, who is joining us on Politically Speaking for the first time. The next thing I want to talk about is this conflict over St. Louis County Prosecutor Bob McCullough's pension.
Well, technically, it's not his pension.
Oh, Joe needs to explain this a little bit more.
Very good point.
Yes, because I covered this.
Perspective pensions.
I covered this thing on Tuesday. The, the council made some changes in 2016 to the pension for the post. Now, there have been some stories that it kind of implied that it was going to be prosecuting attorney McCullough's pension, which it may be, because he's held the office for over 20 years, 25 years. But it's a fact that the changes would not go into effect until 2019, after the 2018 election. So, it's basically whoever is in that job would be affected by these changes. The bottom line is that there's a special state pension fund for circuit attorneys and prosecuting attorneys. Part of this is aimed at bolstering the pensions that OutState and other places have for these people holding these offices to encourage, for them to stay there in a long time. You have to be at least a 12-year holder of that office in order to get it. So, the point is, is that he would get that pension in addition to his county pension. The county pension used to dock whoever was prosecuting attorney by about a third for if that person ended up qualifying for the state pension. There were changes in 2016, eliminated that.
Which we're going to talk about right now. I'm going to play two clips back to back. One is from St. Louis County Executive Steve Stanger, the other one will be from St. Louis County Councilman Sam Page. Here's what the county executive said about the bill that passed in 2016.
You're not suggesting that this was something other than them just overlooking it, that they're now, that they're now embarrassed?
Oh, no. What I think happened is Stephen Deere from the Post-Dispatch contacted them, and they frankly ran like cowards. And now they're saying that they didn't read the bill.
So, you think that they knew what this was?
I think they absolutely knew what the bill was when they voted for it, and I think it's without question. And I think it's an act of cowardice, and I think what they're doing now is an act of retaliation against Bob McCullough, for whatever reason.
Now, I asked you this question over the phone, and I printed it in the article I wrote, but you knew what you were voting on in 2016. You knew that it could eventually increase Bob McCullough's pension if he's reelected. Is that, is that accurate?
Oh, yes, it is, and again, it's not Bob McCullough's, it's the prosecuting attorney's pension, whoever that may be, okay? Every time we have any type of bill or ordinance, we have a letter come down of recommendation for legislation. Now, it could be from a department head, it could be from the county executive's office, it could be from another councilperson. We have an assistant who can look at it and read it, I can read it, and I read that very clearly, it's clearly stated. I mean, it's said, it's only three paragraphs, and it's said very concise that, you know, this does affect the prosecuting attorney's pension. There was no question about, now, this is just, I'm just saying what I saw, what I read. If, if I had a question about that, I can either contact whoever brought it, brought in the legislation, could be another council member, whoever, I can call the county councillor's office, who works for all the council. There's a whole staff of council, you know, councillors up there, and lawyers in the county councillor's office. If it was a department, Transportation Department sending something through, if I didn't understand it or had questions, I call the Transportation Department, and they tell me, there's multiple resources for any legislation we receive. If we don't know what it is, if we, we can find out from whoever introduced it.
Now, I want to make it clear, because I talked with both Councilman Page and Councilwoman Irby. Councilwoman Irby told me that she should have been more, you know, studious and looked at this bill closer. But she does not agree with the concept that the prosecutor should get a full county pension and a full state pension. And Councilman Page basically said the same thing, but he also added this about not only being more scrutinous of this particular issue, but of the county executive in general. Here is Councilman Sam Page right now.
We have to do a better job of scrutinizing everything that comes out of this administration. You know, one challenge that we have is when we question things, the county executive calls us names and throws a fit. And even if he acts like that, we can't be distracted, we, we still have to question everything.
Now, Councilman Page is the chairman of the council, he has three other people that are allied with them, and he's basically been sending a lot of bills to committees, maybe as a way to get department heads to talk with those four people more. I mean, what do you kind of make of this environment that has kind of emerged, that we talked about? And is this pension situation just kind of more part and parcel with the fact that Stanger has an adversarial counsel majority now?
Well, I mean, I could say, in the past, when anybody had legislation, any council member, you would, at the time, you could approach other council members, say, here's what I've brought in. And you'd have your recommendation from whatever department it was through, and there was a rapport there. Well, now, that's not so much the case, but like I was saying before, we do have research available to us every single day to use if need be. As far as how much the other council members make, now, that's, that's their opinion of. I trust the information that I've received in, in previous administration and this administration. It's not, you know, not that often that we can't get an answer, and it's, there's really no reason to not know what you're looking at.
Now, one of the things that Irby said on Tuesday, this was at the special committee meeting before the council meeting, was that her belief was that there should only be one pension for that job. Now, one of the things that his lawyer points out that. Now, one of the things that his lawyer points out, that, that the law, and I think this is federal law, actually, that once you're vested, you can't have your pension, what you've earned, cut.
And this is actually a clip of Bob McCullough's attorney, I think his name is John?
John Hassel.
John Hassel, making that exact point.
You can cut back a pension prospectively. You can't cut back a pension that's already in place. So my point is, to the extent that they want to go all the way back to pre-2009 and make it dollar for dollar, I'm not sure what the economic reason is for doing that, but Bob is already vested at the one-third, so you can't take that away from him.
So that was basically what you were saying?
Yeah, because what he's referring to is the county used to have, this is before 2009, whereas if a circuit attorney took that state pension, they lost dollar for dollar. As of 2009, from 2009 until 2016, they just got that cut, their state, their county pension by a third if they took the state pension. Now, again, the state pension's only if you've been in office for 12 years. So basically Hassel is saying, since he's covered?
Yeah.
You can't cut it. Now, do you think that is influencing some councilmembers? Because they will be doing a final vote next week and actually discussing it. I mean, are they opening themselves up to a court fight if they go ahead and pass the bill?
Well, again, I, I don't like to speak for what other councilmembers are thinking or going to do. Personally, the way it was explained to us, which I'm glad Mr. Hassel was there to explain everything, it sounded like there was precedent in those early Supreme Court decision against taking away that pension. As far as the county councillor or county prosecutor attorney's position receiving a pension, they, and I'm not an attorney, I can't explain this exactly, but a lot of the work, maybe the majority of it, the cases they handle are state cases. So the, as was, as you stated, when they set, when the state set up a pension for the prosecuting attorneys and circuit attorneys after 12 years, they're vested after 12 years, was to retain and entice good prosecuting attorneys or qualified for the position. Certainly, they could make, and I don't know for a fact. I'm assuming that the prosecuting attorney of St. Louis County in the private world could probably make more money. He's stayed on in his position for a while. But besides the fact that he, they prosecute state cases, he's also the head of the prosecuting attorney's office that handles St. Louis County cases and just the department itself. I mean, he does a job for St. Louis County, but also, if you look at it that way, also, it's almost a second job. Not second job, it's part of his job. It's in his job description, but handles stuff for the state as well. So for the state to do a pension for all prosecuting attorneys, not for one St. Louis County, is great, but, you know, he, I believe the county, as any other employee, worked for St. Louis County. That's part of the enticement to get your job. You can make more money, but that's, when you, when you get a pension or benefits with it, that's part of, you know, your compensation.
Right. So how do you think it's, the bill that essentially takes away his county pension is going to fare next week? It passed to be a voice vote, but it's possible that the arguments put forth by Prosecutor McCullough's attorney may be pretty enticing. What's kind of your sense of, from talking with councilmembers?
Okay, well, I wish I could say, we're talking with councilmembers, this just doesn't seem me to dialogue much anymore, but just my take on, I voted no. It was imperfection. Because in light of the fact that we were given of multiple points of information and legal opinion on, on this pension, that I personally didn't know for a fact. I mean, I think we would take more time to, to see exactly where we're going with this. And it's just my opinion. I, I can't speak for what the council's going to do with this. In light of what we were told, I mean, it was pretty much directed that if we were to try to totally take away the pension, that there would be consequences. Now, you know, again, I can't speak for anybody else. I think we need to research it more, and personally, I believe he deserves the full pension, just, that's my opinion.
Do you think that there is politics behind this? Or is it just in response to the Post-Dispatch stories?
Well, I, I had, I can't sit here and say, I believe there's politics, yes.
I was just going to say, there's politics behind everything.
I know, but I want him to talk about it.
No, I do, I do believe so, and it's, and it's, that's the way things go. I'm, you know, we're, you know, I don't think insult people's intelligence and say there's no politics involved here. It's, it's, but there's politics, like you're saying, in everything. It's not uncommon. So, you know, it'll play out, but to, you know, besides taking money away, and it's not the money that the people were thinking it was either, that's, well, there's another thing that was brought up. It wasn't the dollar amount that was reported in the newspaper. That was misreported. But here, I met a thing this morning, and people were questioning a guy like Bob McCullough's integrity and, and, you know, his, all he's done, that I believe he's done a lot for St. Louis County, you know, when they're running for governor, running for senator, running for county executive, they, Bob's name is brought into the picture when he's on state and national boards for prosecuting attorneys across the country and across the state. He's a very well-respected prosecuting attorney, not just a person. Besides, and he's skipped all those opportunities and private practice to, to put away the bad guys, as he's once said, and, you know, I, to tarnish his reputation by saying this is some collusion to get payback, political pay, you know, for campaign money, is just unfortunate.
Well, I want to put a finer point on Joe's question. Okay. An expectation that the two Republicans on the council were going to be allied with Stanger, which they were at the beginning of his term, was unrealistic. I assume that Harder and Wassinger would depart from the county executive on some issues. What I will say, though, is, you know, Mike O'Meara lost reelection pretty soundly, and I think the county executive or everybody else could have probably put more help to save him. It didn't happen. There could have been a better Democratic candidate to run against Ernie Trakus. With all due respect to Pat Jaeger, she obviously wasn't good enough because she lost. And I don't know what has happened with the Sam Page situation, but he went from a Steve Stanger ally to probably one of his fiercest critics in the span of basically a year. So what I'm trying to get at is, do you think a lot of the county executive's political problems are self-inflicted right now? Could he have done more to get a better council on his side? And I didn't even get to the aspect that he had such an adversarial relationship with Councilwoman Irby at the beginning of his term, that she is incentivized to do anything she can to make her, his life miserable now. So I'd be interested in your perspective on that, because I have heard from others that his problems right now are somewhat self-inflicted. What are your thoughts on that?
Well, you know, hindsight, you could look at a lot of different things. Some of the moves were, whatever it was called moves, some way the circumstances came with, I mean, with things that were going on in South County before an election and, and the Trump, you know, a lot of people were trumped. I mean, there's, the votes were out there unexpectedly. You know, when, when you lose anything, you always look back and say, "Why didn't I do something different?" And it's, it's easy to be second guessing now. You know, I, I believe the county executive does a good job, and people don't understand what all they do, and certainly any county executive, and any, a lot of public officeholders, mayors or whoever, do a lot of things people don't give them credit for. But that's, you know, that's the nature of business, they understand that. Yeah, I'm not saying that anything was one certain reason that these elections were lost. Obviously, in North County, the demographics have changed, and there's no denying that. There was concerted effort on certain areas in North County, and, and, you know, that's the first time that council seat, I believe, had a primary in a long time. That's a different, when you have a lot of supporters who are in a different party, just because they know you're doing a good job, but they don't switch over, then that's hard to beat sometimes.
To read between the lines of that a little bit, the council, former councilman O'Meara's district is majority African-American, and this, I think, was the first time he had a credible African-American opponent in the primary. He may not have been able to do anything to prevent that result, just, I mean, also, I have to give credit to Councilwoman Walton Gray, that she ran a, obviously, a good enough campaign to beat him. So I, I do understand that point, and I think that's fair context to make.
Well, as you look towards, I mean, like, like you mentioned, the Trump factor, which doesn't always, I mean, the presidential contests don't always trickle down to local races. But in this case, it may have helped. I mean, Pat Jaeger, who I knew from covering her when she was in the State House, she may have lost anyway, I mean, you know, because of, because of other factors, but the Trump element did increase Trakus' margin, I think there's probably no question. So looking towards 2018, Stanger's going to be running for reelection. From what I understand, you're running for reelection, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and how do, how do you see the climate going into 2018? Do you think some of these council arguments are going to affect your contest or not? Do you think there's going to be a trickle down from all the chaos going on in Washington right now? Just kind of your thoughts.
Well, certainly, I mean, anything's possible. I, you know, as far as my race, there's, there's been some things that throughout the time that we've been able to do through my term, that have helped a lot of different groups that otherwise wouldn't have had some help. But there's always people who don't agree with what we're doing. You know, that's pretty generic, obviously, but I think, you know, we pride ourselves, we, myself and my assistant, on what we do for our district is responding, we answer every email, every phone call, every communication, you know, we, if we don't have an answer, we get a forum, so we're out there in the community, we meet with every opportunity we have, so I try my best to represent them. Now, this is trickle down from all this going on between the county executive and other councilmembers. I don't know. I would hope, and I, I strongly believe that the 5th District was, people were very aware of their politics and educated on who they vote for and take the time to read into it. And if they decide they'd like to keep me on, I'd appreciate that, but if they don't, I understand it. You know, it could be, if you're saying collateral damage, if that's what you're insinuating, I don't know, that I think they would understand the difference between my position and prosecuting attorneys or county executives.
Well, when you were at that Afton meeting this morning, what sort of fallout, I mean, were you hearing stuff in general about, you know, how the, I mean, were people upset about what's going on in Clayton? Or are they not?
Well, and it's, it was a smaller meeting of senior citizens, and, you know, they're concerned, a couple of them were, what they read in the newspaper, although they, they're only receiving one source of information. And if you look at certain things like that, well, then, yeah, I'd be concerned about, you know, public safety on the metro and pensions and what have you, but I had an opportunity to explain to them, there is another side and some facts about things. And they, "Well, we didn't know that." I said, "Well, no, so that's why we do get out in the community." And most of those are just, we meet with them, with all different people, just to, "What do you need for your community?" I mean, it's, some of them are still interested in if their trash is picked up and if there's going to be development down the road, and, you know, that's, they stay out of all the major politics. They're very happy with the services, the police and fire, you know, afford them, so they're pretty much, you know, general questions, nothing, no alarm bells going off.
Well, you mentioned well-informed people in your district. I know at least one person sitting in this room, actually, two. I know you're very well-informed in your district, but my co-host is a resident of the 5th District, and I'm sure is looking forward to getting hundreds of thousands of mailers from your reelection campaign, from both you and your Green Party opponent, if you have one.
And they'll probably be a Republican, too.
They'll probably be a Republican, too.
No doubt.
Well, I would think.
Yeah, it is a, it is a reasonably competitive district. We just wanted to thank you very much for coming on our show. We will have you on again as soon as we can. For all of our stories, STLPublicRadio.org. Follow me on Twitter at Jay Rosenbaum. Follow Joe on Twitter at?
JMannies, that's J-M-A-N-N-I-E-S.
I don't think you're on Twitter, but is there any other way for people in the 5th District or otherwise to get ahold of you online?
No, basically just on the county website or the county, or phone at the council. I will be, if, if I have a campaign, I'll be on every, I just, I'm not savvy.
I, I think you've made, I think you've made the right decision to stay off Twitter, and until then, so long.